Okay, the members will please be seated for the last time so that they take attendance from the monitors. Thank you. Precinct one. Precinct one reports eleven present, eleven absent. Precinct two. Precinct two reports thirteen present, twelve absent. Precinct three. Precinct three reports six present, twelve absent. Precinct four. Precinct four reports fifteen present, five absent. Precinct five. Precinct five reports fifteen present, thirteen absent. Precinct six. Precinct six reports fourteen present, seven absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports seventeen present, thirteen absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports sixteen present, thirteen absent at large. Yes, that's correct. Sixteen present at large, six absent and remote, we have. Yeah, I got them. Eleven and eleven. Okay, we have two remote. Yes. Okay, seven and eleven. Did you get that, Amy? A hundred and twenty-six members being present, ninety-one being absent. The quorum is a hundred and ten, so we have achieved a quorum and the meeting will now come to order. At this time with the monitors, please bring up their attendance, the first attendance list to the town clerk. Thank you.
Make sure they keep the bottom sheet.
If I may be allowed, is with deep regret that I announce to all of us gathered here this evening of the passing of former State Senator Louis Peter Bertinazzi on Saturday, May seventeenth. Known to all of us as Lou or Senator, he was a graduate of Milford High School in Tufts University. Senator Bertinazzi began his professional career as a guidance counselor at Medway High School. He had an inauspicious start to his political career. In nineteen fifty-six and again in nineteen sixty-two, he ran as a candidate for town meeting, but he fell short of a seat on both occasions. The competition was fierce in those days, as twenty-eight candidates vied for fourteen seats in nineteen fifty-six in precinct two and thirty-one candidates vied for fourteen seats in nineteen sixty-two in precinct five. Undaunted in nineteen sixty-four, Senator Bertinazzi re-entered the political stage in Milford and ran for one of the three seats available on the then Board of Selectmen. In a field of seven candidates, Senator Bertinazzi gained the seat with the third-highest vote total. Thus began a political career that lasted thirty-two years. He went on to be elected our representative and then senator to the General Court of Massachusetts, and he rose to become Senate Majority Leader. Senator Bertinazzi retired from politics in nineteen ninety-four, and he remained active in the community with his advocacy for citizenship, education, and culture through the Senator Louis P. Bertinazzi Foundation's Outstanding Citizenship Award, the Foundation's Outstanding Teacher Award, and the Foundation's Study in Italy Summer Program co-sponsored with the Milford Lodge of the Sons and Daughters of Italy and the Dr. Peter Morganelli Scholarship. Senator Bertinazzi was devoted to his Catholic faith, his wife and family, his Italian heritage, and this community. We are the beneficiaries of his great sense of duty and many years of service to the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so it is fitting that all present here this evening now rise and stand for a moment of silence in memory of Senator Louis Peter Bertinazzi. Thank you all. At this time, I'd ask everybody to again, please rise and remain standing if you're so inclined for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. At this time, I'll call upon Town Clerk Amy Hennessy Neves to swear in new town meeting members, both elected and at large.
Good evening, everyone. If I could just have you raise your right hands for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as town meeting members in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? So help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. And at this time, Mrs. Neves will please read the opening of the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. This is the annual town meeting, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either constable of the town of Milford in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, on the nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five A.D., at seven o'clock P.M. In accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Ten, the annual town meeting shall be held in the Milford Upper Town Hall for those seeking reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, due to incap- incapac- excuse me, incapacity or disability who provide sufficient proof of such condition and who pre-register for the annual town meeting at individual locations selected by such members at the time of their preregistration. As part of the reasonable accommodations process, remote participation may be permitted. Instructions for those seeking reasonable accommodations to register to participate at other locations shall be provided by the town clerk. The annual town meeting will then and there act upon the following articles. Article one.
Does any member object to dispensing with the waving of the reading of the articles? Hearing no objection, Mrs. Neves will continue with the officer's return of service.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass. Date April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. By virtue of this warrant, I have notified the legal voters of the town of Milford to meet at the times and places and for the purposes within named as directed. Robert Tassino, Chief of Police of Milford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Are there any resolutions? Mr. Mazakelli.
Good evening, town meeting members. I have three resolutions to mention, too. In a very surprise of Senator Bertinazzi's passing, and may he rest in peace. The members of the Milford Town Meeting, before we begin our discussion today, would like to take a moment to honor and remember the individuals who contributed to our community and have left a lasting impact. And with great respect, we present this resolution in recognition of their life and legacy. And the first one I have is Catherine L. Mastriani. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Catherine L. Mastriani, whereas Catherine L. Mastriani served as a member of the town meeting in two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand twenty. Whereas Catherine L. Mastriani was a member of the Milford Democratic Town Committee from two thousand four to two thousand and twenty. Whereas Catherine L. Mastriani was appointed as library trustee in two thousand and twelve and elected in two thousand fourteen. Whereas Catherine L. Mastriani was a member of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Catherine L. Mastriani served as a poll worker for many years. Whereas Catherine L. Mastriani served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to her memory and a copy of this resolution be forwarded to her family, and this is respectfully submitted by the Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin Esquire and Chair, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'm going to ask that all the resolutions be read before we stand in tribute to the members.
Thank you. The next resolution I have is whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of George A. Clemens Jr. Where George A. Clemens Jr. was a member of the town meeting from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and two. Whereas George A. Clemens Jr. served as a tobacco control director for the Board of Health from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and two. Whereas George A. Clemens Jr. served as library trustee from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen and in two thousand seventeen. Whereas George A. Clemens served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Again, respectfully submitted, Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Chair, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh, members. The third one I have is whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of John P. Burns. Whereas John P. Burns was a member of the town meeting from nineteen seventy-six to two thousand and seventeen. Whereas John P. Burns was appointed as library trustee in two thousand nine and elected as library trustee from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen. Whereas John P. Burns served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Chair, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Mr. Walsh? Thank you.
Good evening. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Stephen J. Tretel. Whereas Stephen J. Tretel was a member of the town meeting at different times from two thousand to two thousand and nineteen. Whereas Stephen J. Tretel served as a member of the Building Code, excuse me, the Building Code Board of Appeals from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-nine. Whereas Stephen J. Tretel served as a member of the Open Space Advisory Committee in two thousand and two. Whereas Stephen J. Tretel served as a member of Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty. Whereas Stephen J. Tretel served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted by the Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Esquire, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Paula J. Consigli. Whereas Paula J. Consigli served as a member of town meeting from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas Paula J. Consigli served as a poll worker for many years in our community. Whereas Paula J. Consigli served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute in her memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to her family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Esquire, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Henry Shenamian. Whereas Henry Shenamian was a member of town meeting at different times from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand and twenty. Whereas Henry M. Shenamian was trustee of Vernon Grove Cemetery at different times from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty. Whereas Henry M. Shenamian served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute in his memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Select Board, Thomas J. O'Laughlin, Esquire, Paul A. Mazakelli, and Michael K. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Attorney Murray.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Phyllis A. Ahern. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as secretary to the Superintendent of Schools from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen sixty-four and nineteen sixty-six through nineteen eighty. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as school business administrator from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-four. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as executive secretary and Board of Selectment Administrator from June nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-six. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as a member of the Milford Town Hall Renovation Committee in nineteen eighty-seven. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as a member of the Milford Public Safety Building Committee from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-six. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as a member of town meeting from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and five. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served as a member of the Geriatric Authority of Milford from two thousand four to twenty sixteen. Whereas Phyllis A. Ahern served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to her memory and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to her family. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the Milford Select Board.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. And now, as a token of our respect and admiration, I would ask that the business of the meeting be suspended, that everyone here stand with bowed heads as a silent tribute to the memory of Phyllis A. Ahern, John P. Burns, George A. Clemens Jr., Paula J. Consigli, Catherine L. Mastriani, Henry M. Shenanum, Shenamian, and Stephen J. Tretel. At this time, we'll call upon Article one. Any reports? Attorney Lazard from the Finance Committee.
Andrew Lazard, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'm going to try to address some high-level numbers that matters tonight. You have plenty of details in your packet if you want to go into individual line item accounts. Could I have the next slide, please? Okay, so this year's budget is a hundred and sixty-two million and change. I've highlighted a half a dozen items that probably comprise about ninety percent of the spending this year. As you can see, the growth averages out to six point three percent. Now, in the first instance, I commend everybody who was involved in putting this budget together because this was not an easy budget year. It was sort of a three-party process with the internal finance team representing the Select Board led by Zach Taylor, the Finance Committee and department heads, and the money was a little tight, and so there was a lot of pushing and pulling here, but we have a budget that we think works, so that's the good news. A cautionary note: health insurance and retirement. That's one out of every six dollars that we spend in our budget. If you look at those two percentages, that's a blended increase this year of almost nine percent. So if that were to continue, that is a concern. Couple of other items, and these are sort of the larger accounts, but you know, you'll see plenty of other details in the report. For example, Blackstone Valley Tech, I think we picked up an additional forty students. That is increasing our Blackstone Valley Tech budget by about a half a million dollars. That's a very large increase. It's a small piece of the budget, but it was about thirty percent, so the education portion of the budget is actually somewhat over eight percent when you take that into account. The IT folks had a decent-sized jump this year. We had some cybersecurity issues, some communication systems that needed to be installed. I think we had a twelve percent increase in their budget. I won't go through all the additional line items. They're all included in the other below, but that's the general overview of the budget for this year. Next slide, please. There are three non-operational items that we deal with. You may recall from my presentation in October, we went through these in some detail. I'll go through it in a little less detail tonight. First is what's called the excess levy capacity or the levy surplus. That is basically, as I said back in October, the difference between the maximum that we could tax the citizens of Milford based upon the rules of Proposition Two and a Half and what we actually tax them. The differential is the excess levy capacity. That's our cushion, so to speak. Our goal is to keep this at around six million. We tried to get it to six million for this budget. We came in a little short. As you can see, it's around five point four million based on all the projections. We're hoping to get it up to six million as part of the October budget. And as I said back in October, our long-term objective is to have a good chunk of that available to deal with whatever work is going to need to be done in the next several years at the high school. The second piece of the non-operational line items is the stabilization account. We have proposed to put an additional one point eight million dollars into those accounts. There is a long-term stabilization account and a short-term stabilization account. The long-term has approximately thirty million dollars in it. We also anticipate some of that to be used in conjunction with the proposed work at the high school. The six million is available as needed. We were proposing to spend one million of that tonight in connection with the town park project, which I will discuss further later. We did overfund the short-term stabilization account earlier in the year, so we're proposing to take some of that out. And the last is, as we consistently do, we've proposed to allocate a million seven fifty for capital improvements. That number typically gets increased in the fall once we have a determination of free cash, which you'll recall from October is basically higher revenues than anticipated or lower expenses than anticipated, additional funds that become available that we're authorized to spend. Next slide, please. So we talked about the expense side. Let's talk about the revenue side. The real estate taxes comprise between fifty and sixty percent of our total budget. That's the largest line item. It's also the lowest growth item. You can see that that's anticipated to be about three and a half percent. That is a result of the Proposition Two and a Half plus additional growth in the town interest and fees. That's how that number typically gets arrived at. The second largest number is the state aid. That's probably a little over a third of our budget. You'll see that that's the largest line item, I mean, other than the other, which is de minimis. The state aid comes in at ten point two percent. That's a high number, but we're going to talk more about that later. The takeaway from this slide is keep in mind that we struggled with the budget this year, and that was with a ten point two percent projected increase in state aid. We typically first learn about the likely state aid number in January of the year, and then those numbers get refined as it works its way through the State House and the State Senate, and the budget gets put together in the spring. Next slide, please. This is probably the most important document that you'll see tonight. We were trying to figure out where the pressure points were, where the struggles were, and so we went back and we looked at six years of data. We went line by line through expenses and line by line through revenue. Now, the biggest item that's a variable here is the state aid. You say, well, ten point nine nine percent over the last six years, is that customary? Well, it's been customary in very recent years because of some legislation, some demographics that are driven by the schools, but historically, this is not a typical number. If you went back to the period twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen, I think you would see our state aid averaging significantly less. And we're coming to rely on that high percentage of state aid. This expense item, you see an average of six point one eight over the last six years, is typical for the past six years, but it's high historically. I went back and I watched the two thousand nineteen town meeting. Our town budget that year increased by three point five percent. And I think if you went back from, say, twenty-ten to twenty-nineteen, you would see it's a lot closer to that than the numbers we've had in the last six years. So what has happened in the last six years? Well, we did have some high inflation for twelve or eighteen months back in, say, twenty-twenty-one. Then there was COVID, where you recall the federal government was spraying money in all different directions. But the biggest piece of this is the state aid. Now, the health insurance, you can see, is four point nine nine percent over the past six years. Put a footnote on that. It's nine point nine percent this year. So it's been a blended average of five and a half percent the last six years. It's upwards of nine percent this year. Personnel contracts, a lot of our personnel contracts typically have two components. There's a cost of living component, and there's also what they refer to as step or level increases. A lot of these contracts are seeing growth in those costs of five and a half, six percent A lot of these contracts are seeing growth in those costs of 5.5%, 6% a year, so that even if we don't have any change in the number of personnel, we're seeing department budgets going up 5.5%, 6%, or a little over 6%. So when you have those baked-in expenses for the employees, the employee expenses, and also some of our capital expenses have been higher than normal, that's where you see the significant increase in our average expense increase for each year. And that is being carried by the state aid. Now, we don't know when state aid is going to turn. I think it's probably unlikely that these numbers will continue into perpetuity. If that number were to drop, if it were to increase, but just increase at, say, a 3% or 4% number, for example, this year, we would have a $3 million hole in the budget. So this could turn quickly, and I think it's important that everybody understand the dynamics of all of this so that we can think about taking into account some business practices and cost control. And I think it's important for all the decision-makers to understand how all these pieces fit together and perhaps do some contingency planning if the next few years don't necessarily turn out the way the last few years have been. One of the cautionary notes we always give on the Finance Committee is not to create permanent expenses with temporary revenue sources. This often comes up in the context of grants. We've seen more than one instance where a department is funding expenses with grants. The grants end up being temporary, so what happens? Those expenses fall off the table from the grant onto the town budget. The concern is that we may have something similar going on here with a much larger scale with respect to the state aid if these numbers don't turn out to be reliable in the long term. Now, what could happen with state aid? Well, some people are concerned about what's happening in the federal government right now. The state of Massachusetts' budget is $60 billion, as I understand it. About a quarter of that comes from the federal government. People are aware of the skirmishing going on between the state and federal governments in certain states. That could end up having some sort of an effect on our state aid. The economic cycle has not disappeared. If there was a decline in economic circumstances, presumably that would result in a reduction in income taxes collected by the state, capital gains taxes collected by the state. That could also dribble down into local aid. Furthermore, the state could determine that based upon our demographics, we've gotten the big increases that we're entitled to, and they may start to scale these things back. All of these are possibilities. I just thought it was prudent to warn people in advance that this is how our budget has been built over the last several years, and we need to be cognizant of that and exercise caution. So, let's move next to tax burden, because if we get into a tight spot, there's only two choices. You either increase taxes or you reduce expenses. This is a little snapshot, just for everyone's benefit, of the tax burden in Milford and the percentage changes. You'll see in 2023 and 2024, we actually had significant residential tax increases, and you might wonder how that could be if we have Proposition 2.5 and the taxes are supposed to go up by 2.5%. What you have to keep in mind is we have a dual tax rate, which means that the commercial is taking a different tax rate computation from the residential, but it's all based on appraised values. And appraised values have been increasing more on the residential level than the commercial level, so unless those numbers get recalibrated, the residential folks end up taking a larger proportionate share. So if you thought that your taxes were higher than you anticipated in the last couple of years, it was not your imagination. These are the numbers, and that's why it happened. Next slide, please. So recommendations, Finance Committee is an advisory body. It's advisory to the Town Meeting, so let's just talk about some of the things that can be done. First, we got to think about limiting ourselves to core functions of local government. We can't be all things to all people. Second thing is the notion of sunset committees. Occasionally, departments will create initiatives, new programs, which may involve capital spending, new personnel. We would suggest that all of these initiatives should be evaluated from time to time, and initiatives that aren't working particularly well should be pared back and eliminated rather than just assuming that everything that's been done in the past formed the baseline for this year, which gives us a higher baseline and a more difficult budget to try to adjust to in the following years. Consolidation, this is a basic business concept. If we have opportunities to combine departments or services with an eye toward cost savings, we should look at those things. One example that's been kicked around over the years is formation of a Department of Public Works. Other towns of our size often have them. It's something that should at least be explored, particularly if we think we could realize some cost savings. And the last thing is obviously cost control, which I've spoken about. We have to be careful not to make promises that we may not be able to keep. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's on the operational side. Now, this goes to the capital spending. You've seen a similar slide in October when I took the higher-value items that we were proposing to spend and doing the same thing this year, and I'll just briefly go through them. The cameras, there's really three components to the cameras: the fire department, the water department, and Fino Field. The fire department and the water department require some surveillance, either as part of their contracts or state statutes. The Fino Field is the smallest piece of this. It's about $20,000. Determination was made that given the amount of the investment that was made at that field and some apparent vandalism that happened there, that that might be a prudent expenditure to put cameras up there. The town park renovation, you all see it when you drive by Town Park. This has been a little bit of a problem in terms of cost. You may recall, this was originally anticipated to be a $2 million project to form multiple pieces. Everything that you've seen done so far, in addition to the renovation of the bathroom, the upgrade to the bandstand, as well as the basketball court on Pearl Street. Long and short, the $2 million that was initially allocated was expended, and we only got the first portion of the project done. It's a proposal to spend $1 million tonight to do the next two pieces, which is the restrooms and the bandstand. Part of the concern here is we have about $1.3 million in grants that are embedded into this town park project, and if we don't attend to this additional work now, there's a risk that we could lose the grant. And as I mentioned earlier and as referenced on the slide, we're proposing that this be paid out of the short-term stabilization account, which was overfunded back in October. School literacy program. The schools have asked to provide some materials that will allow for uniformity in the curriculum throughout the school process. They believe this is largely a one-time item and that they've agreed not to put this into the base of their budget. That's why it's being treated as a separate standalone program. After much negotiation, the Finance Committee agreed to support that program. The prospect heights, drain, pipe, some infrastructure work that needs to be done. The Stacy School elevator apparently is not working, so that obviously creates a concern for disabled people there. And we did not want to wait until the October capital meeting because that would mean that we would go into the fall at the school without disability access for people using that elevator. So that's why it's proposed to be in the budget tonight. The fire department, this is gear that is designed to reduce the risk of cancer from PFAS, which are the so-called forever chemicals. Over the past couple of years, as I understand it, some of these uniforms were being purchased on sort of a graduated basis, and a decision was made that we should probably get this done all at once now for health and safety reasons. And lastly, snow and ice. This is a typical article that we have to cover deficiencies over the $600,000 that is allocated each year for snow and ice removal. That's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Lazard. Are there any other reports? If not, we'll take up Article Two. Mr. Long.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Brian Long, Chair of the Milford Personnel Board. I move that the Town vote to amend the wage and salary schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position levels and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 as follows.
Mr. Long, is the wage and salary schedule in the motion exactly the same as appears in the warrant that was mailed to all Town Meeting Members?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
It is the same. Does any member object to waiving the reading of the wage and salary schedule for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025? Hearing no objection, the motion is made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Long.
Town Meeting Members, Article Two lays out the positions, salaries, and hourly rates for employees of the Town of Milford based off the wage and salary schedule approved by this body. These are reviewed by the Personnel Board throughout the year, in conjunction with Human Resources, the Finance Department, and department heads. The Personnel Board asks for your support. Thank you.
Does any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article Three. Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the Town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as follows.
Mr. Walsh, are the salary and compensation figures in the motion exactly the same as appears in the warrant?
They are, Mr. Moderator.
They are the same. Does any member object to waiving the reading of the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the Town? Hearing no objection, the motion has been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This year, the Select Board is recommending a 3% salary adjustment for full-time and part-time elected officials. We urge your support of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article Four. Attorney Lazard.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated the amount of $162,178,166 as itemized in the report of the Finance Committee and proposed Town of Milford Article Four, May 2025, as may be necessary to defray expenses for the financial year beginning July 1, 2025, and that the amounts of money set forth therein be appropriated and transferred where indicated for the several purposes itemized, each numbered item being considered as a separate appropriation, and that the same be expended only for such purposes.
Motion's been made and seconded. At this time, referring to the document entitled Town of Milford, Article Four, May 2025, does any Town Meeting Member wish to discuss or amend a line item from this document? If they do, just read out what the line item is and the number and description. Anybody? Care to discuss any line item or amend any line item? Does any... Okay, then. Hearing no... No further discussion. All those in favor of the question, which is that the Town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated the amounts of $162,178,166 as itemized in the report of the Finance Committee and proposed Town of Milford Article Four, May 2025, as may be necessary to defray expenses for the fiscal year, excuse me, financial year beginning July 1, 2025, and that the amounts of money set forth therein be appropriated and transferred where indicated for the several purposes therein itemized, each numbered item being considered as a separate appropriation, and that the same be expended only for such purposes. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article Five. Mr. Masakelli.
In Article Five, I move that the Town vote to enact certain measures set forth herein which are presented each year to the annual Town Meeting.
Mr. Masakelli, are the certain measures of the motion exactly the same as appears in the warrant?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, they are.
They are the same. Does any member object to dispensing with the reading of the certain measures presented each year to the annual Town Meeting? Hearing no objection, the motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I do. This article and this motion have been restructured by the Select Board at the recommendation of the Town Government Study Committee in an effort to save what has been perhaps unnecessary utilization of time at prior Town Meetings. This one article takes seven items, which used to be separate articles each year at the annual Town Meeting, and which always came forward in the same fashion to address matters which must be voted upon on an annual basis. Doing these as separate articles simply took unnecessary time, and the Select Board concurs with the Town Government Study Committee that it is a valid approach to do these as one vote. I will briefly explain the content of this motion. Item A allows short-term borrowing when necessary under applicable provisions of the general laws. Item B is the annual vote, which authorizes the Select Board to take charge of legal affairs. Item C allows for the proper processing of parking violation monies. Item D authorizes the treasurer-collector to enter into what we refer to as compensating balance agreements with financial institutions if they deem such to be in the best interests of the Town. Item E allows amounts that are recovered from insurance companies or third parties for damage to Town properties, notwithstanding the amount to be spent directly to effectuate repairs to damaged properties. Item F allows for contracting for up to five years instead of the limitation of three years, which would otherwise be in effect. This is necessary for simple agreements such as equipment leasing, coffee machines, and such. And Item G, the final item, authorizes the treasurer-collector to speed up the process of collection of taxes in instances where taxpayers are in arrears, is willing to deed the property to the Town rather than go through the cumbersome and somewhat expensive foreclosure process. So I urge you to support this article. Thanks very much for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Masakelli. Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, and the voters are reminded that the borrowing of money or issuing of notes under Measure A of the motion requires a two-thirds vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 2. Since no one has spoken in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If the voice vote is not unanimous, then we'll poll the individual precincts. So all those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Six. Matthew's Achilles. School Committee Chair.
I move that the Town vote to transfer the sum of $4,797.15 from the excess deficiency account, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purpose of student activities not funded in the school department budget.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? If not, question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Seven. Article 7.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $275,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Information Technology Department for purposes of installation of CCTV cameras in certain town facilities, including but not limited to those under the jurisdiction of the Water Department, Fire Department, and Parks Department.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The town is seeking to install closed-circuit TV cameras at the Water Department to meet federal environmental protection guidelines and the Commonwealth Department of Public Utilities recommendations. Through union negotiations, the Fire Department Union negotiated to have CCTV cameras installed at both Birch and Spruce Street stations for asset protection. Fino Field Pool will also have cameras installed to protect the grounds, equipment, and the community. The dispatches of the Police Department will be able to monitor the cameras for these locations, and all maintenance will be handled by the Town IT Department. The amount requested for this article is $275,000. Installing these camera systems in the town facilities can significantly enhance public safety and security, and therefore I urge you your support for this article. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mrs. Crane.
I have a couple of questions regarding this article. I'm concerned about the language saying "including but not limited to." Does that mean that it's carte blanche to put in more cameras elsewhere? Are we going to know about that if it happens? I question the amount of money being spent at this time when the budget seems rather tight. And I guess that's it. Do we get, what kind of rate of return do we get on this investment? How often is there vandalism and, you know, are there other ways of monitoring that? Thank you.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Mazakelli.
Thank you, Christine. Yeah, like I mentioned before, installing these cameras at these facilities can significantly enhance the public safety and security. You take the Water Department, so valuable to us, in such a large acreage that we own for that facility, and it can easily be compromised by people coming there at all times of the night. Having these cameras alone and knowing that they're there will hopefully deter some people who have the idea of causing any harm. Therefore, we ask for a maximum of $275,000. I believe that'll cover what we have here. If there are other departments or other areas of the town that need these cameras, I'm sure it'll be presented in another article at another town meeting as well. We're definitely not going to hide anything. It's something that we feel as though it's, it's not a luxury. It would be a necessity, not only to protect what we have, but protect the safety and security of all of us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Crane, and I'll get to you, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the problem that I have with this is including and not limited to the Water Department. That is so open-ended, it just has no definition to it at all. If it was moved and moved down to and limited to the Water Department and the following departments, I wouldn't have a problem with it. Thank you very much.
Any other vote okay to be heard? Attorney Murray.
So that language cited is really to give some practical flexibility in terms of installation of the cameras. For example, they may want to put cameras focusing on the Main Street Fire Station, but getting in the field, practically speaking, the camera may have to be mounted on Town Hall to focus on the building. Cameras focusing on Fino Field or other parks areas to get a maximum view, the cameras may need to be put on property under the Highway Department. So those kinds of decisions generally get made in the field. The plan and the funding and the approval on this is clear. It's for the Water Department, it's for the Fire Department, and it's primarily under the Parks Department for Fino Field.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. Any other vote okay to be heard? Chief Tassino.
I'm going to be brief. This wasn't my article, but it's kind of...
Excuse me, Chief Tassino, could you just identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Robbie Tassino, Precinct 4. This is part of an effort in town to increase our awareness, and I'm going to break it down real small for you. Everybody has a valid concern about the intrusiveness of cameras. If we want to get into a debate, you're going to have to get behind me because I'm the most liberal person I know. We're very well aware and cognizant of the laws and rights, okay? None of these cameras that we have through town point at anybody's house. We're not tracking anybody's facial recognition, but what I will say is the cameras that we have already put in town have been able to recoup, think about this, recoup money for the town from accidents and incidents and recoup money for our citizens, people with hit-and-runs, damage to their property. These cameras have been invaluable where we wouldn't have been able to recoup the money for the citizens that are living on a fixed income. The dividends that this has provided, the cameras, I can't even put a price tag on it. But I want to talk about, very quickly, about the cameras down at Fino Field. We're going to have the ability to watch the pool when nobody's there. What is that worth? Well, if you're like me, you should be losing sleep that we have a pool that people can access, they can get in, they can get in, that they can access and there's nobody there 24/7. If that doesn't keep you up at night, spend some time with me, and I'll tell you about the tragedies that can go on there, not to mention the tagging, the vandalism that we deal with. These cameras, this proposal is not only fiscally smart, but as far as crime prevention and providing service from police and fire rescue, I say it's imperative. I urge your support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Tassino. The voter in Precinct 2.
True Davis, Precinct 2. I follow what he said. It gave me a little bit of idea where they're going with it. I mean, I'm just wondering, every year, how much money are we going to be spending every year when we come in here? Are we going to spend another $200,000 or $400,000? Is this a commercial entity, or is it going to be both commercial, residential? When is it back into my house? Far-fetched. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other vote okay to be heard? I think Attorney Wilton, she's still there? I don't see her on the screen anymore. Okay, I'm going to turn to Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, precinct member from Precinct 8. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass over the article. That would be a subsidiary motion. It would be to take no action on the article as presented. It is debatable. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, listening to some of the previous speakers, I believe the concern is not necessarily where the cameras are going to be placed, but more what they are going to monitor. So I think the language should be adjusted to address that. For example, not to say we're going to have cameras at Fino Field, but we are going to monitor Fino Field with cameras, and we're going to monitor the water company properties with cameras. So the cameras could be placed on the opposite side of the street, focused on monitoring Fino Field and the other facilities mentioned. I think if the language was adjusted to place some of the members at ease as to specifically what the cameras were going to monitor and not necessarily where they were going to be placed, we'd be better off. So please, I vote to pass over this article until that language can be adjusted accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over the article? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The motion is defeated. We'll come back to the original question now, the main motion. Any other vote okay to be heard on the main motion? Attorney Wilton? Hold on, Ms. McCarthy. Is Attorney Wilton here? Attorney Wilton, if you're there, please. I have no control over it. I don't know, I don't know what the technical problem is here. Ms. McCarthy? You rose up, Mrs. McCarthy? Lena? Did you stand?
Are you ready for me?
Yes, I am.
Good evening, Lena McCarthy, Precinct 3. After listening to everyone, and this is how I feel, the Town of Milford is being proactive right now. They're saying to you, we need this, this is important. Someone could come down to the Water Department, drop something in there, and then where are we? You know, we're short more money then. So I think as people, we all have videos in front of our house, in the back of our house, make sure that no one's taking anything from when Amazon drops something off, and now you're all worried about $275,000. To me, it's a big expense, but it's a good expense. It's something that we should really have for our town. So I urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCarthy. Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator. Everything's normal on my end. I don't know why you're getting here.
David Kinsigley, Member of the zoning board. I think we get the challenges and worry about our privacy, but I've got to make this comment. I am down at Fino Field every single morning, seven days a week, to walk my dog on the trail. I'll read the paper. I actually got rearrended by an unlicensed driver on a Sunday morning at 9:30. I go down there every single morning, and all I see is mattresses, computers, old TVs jammed in the back of the dumpsters. It's just a dumping ground, and you have no idea the amount of trash that the Highway Department has to pick up and the cost associated with that. It's amazing the amount of damage that goes on at that field. I see it because I'm there every day. This is a smart, responsible way to protect the assets of our fields, of our sewer department, our water departments, and I think it's a necessary issue to have. I hope you support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsigley. Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Attorney Wilton, and then...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, she's unmuted, I think.
Oh, okay. Lauren Wilton, Precinct 5. You can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much. So I would urge that you vote no. And the reason for that is, we've got three issues here, right? You've got the Fire Department. The issue there was employee theft and accident reconstruction. You've got the Water Company, which acknowledged vital resource, and you've got Fino Pool graffiti. So the ACLU has addressed this issue many times for municipalities, and they acknowledge that there's got to be a balance between, you know, surveillance versus security. So with respect to the Water Company, vital resource, I get it, it makes sense to me. Fino Pool, Fino Pool, Fino Pool makes no sense to me because graffiti covered over with some paint. I mean, 30 bucks. Fire Department, if I was an employee, I certainly wouldn't want cameras on me. Accident reconstruction, I worked in insurance industry for 15 years. You can easily reconstruct an accident without cameras. You know, there's a bigger issue here, which is, you know, you don't want to be living in a place where you cannot collect freely, and as a public citizen, you know, you don't want to have government surveillance, and if you're going to, then there's a recommended model bylaw that should be enacted before such an expense went into place. And so I think that it's premature. I know that the motion to pass over failed, and so because of that, I would urge that you vote no.
Thank you, Attorney Wilton. Any other vote okay to be heard? The voter in, okay, if you want to be recognized, you're going to have to stand up.
My name is Earl Wagner, Precinct 3. I'm not going to keep you long. I've listened to everybody here talk, and everybody has fantastic, wonderful, great ideas. One thing has never been brought off, and I'm saying this in respect to the police chief, all these cameras, they do things, they don't do things, but one thing that nobody has mentioned that's going to save the town an awful lot of time, money, and destruction, it's a magic word, it's called deterrent. Mr. Kinsigley's talking about garbage. People find out there's a camera watching them, he's not going to drop his garbage. People find out they're going to go swimming in the pool at midnight, somebody might drown, they're on camera, they're not going to do it. Deterrent saves you money, saves you time, saves you damage, and saves you lives. Let's look at it objectively, responsibly, and please, honestly, do what's right. I'm on it.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article 8.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board for the purpose of purchasing decorative light poles.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article will allow the town to purchase decorative light poles to be stockpiled to be available to replace light poles that are damaged in an accident due to severe weather. We currently use an outside vendor for pole replacement, and it costs up ten to thirteen thousand dollars per pole to the town. The highway department has agreed to assume the responsibility to replace the poles. We can purchase five poles at a reduced cost. The cost now to replace a pole would be between five and seven thousand dollars. We will also purchase four decorative light fixtures to also be stockpiled at the highway department. The amount requested for this article is thirty-five thousand dollars. And if I may add to this, I was driving down Main Street this year one night, and I noticed that quite a few light poles were out. In the following day, I called our highway surveyor, Mr. Cristofoli, who graciously every year takes care of these for us, and he said to me, "Mike, I'm well aware of it." He said, "But I'm waiting for inventory to come in." And ladies and gentlemen, that's a serious problem in that the reason I called them, I had gotten to an area of Main Street that was very dark, and there was a woman crossing the crosswalk with her child that almost got hit. And so what this article is going to do, it's going to allow the highway department to stockpile the equipment so that when a light pole either gets damaged from an accident or it goes out or it needs replacement, we're going to have them at the highway barn. And so we're going to be able to rectify the problem immediately before somebody in our community gets hurt. That being said, ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to please support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti from Precinct Eight. Through you, Mr. Moderator, can you please ask the sponsor of this article how many light poles had to be replaced last year? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any voter care to be heard?
Richard Valani, town administrator, precinct six also. Mike, I don't have an exact number for you, but it was more than five or six. At one time, we had at least five or six that needed to be replaced. Four. My highway surveyor is telling me right now we have four that currently need to be replaced. Prior, if we do not support this article, we have to order the pole from a third party. It's much more costly. It takes much more time. This is not only an article that will let us replace the poles more quickly, it is a cost-saving article also. Please also be aware, if the pole is damaged by a motor vehicle, for example, and we're able to identify the owner of that motor vehicle, we do pursue them through town council and legal action. So any money we can recoup, we will try to recover. And that does happen on more than one occasion. But I don't have an exact number. There's four out right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Valani. Well, Mr. Visconti, we don't have arguments like that here. So any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the select board for the purposes of engineering, consulting, and legal expenses, which will be necessary in relation to the cleanup of an environmental hazard on town property at or about the Burt Street Fire Station.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, in May of two thousand and twenty-four, the Department of Environmental Protection notified the town of Milford. They believe that the PFAS contamination encountered at the forty-B Burt Street property migrated from fire suppression foams used at the abutting Burt Street Fire Station burning building. In other words, the testing facility for the Milford Fire Department. The DEP required to investigate the contamination and submitted a status report to the DEP by June two thousand and twenty-five. We have retained Haley and Aldrich, an environmental consultant, to provide preliminary reports and a proposal to complete the work for the required two thousand and twenty-five status report submitted. As of October two thousand and twenty-four, special town meeting, the town appropriated ninety thousand dollars for the consultant for the first phase of this work. Also, town meeting members were advised, we expect to request an additional funds to complete the next phase of our remediation in two thousand and twenty-five. The amount requested at this time for the next phase of the remediation in this article is seventy-five thousand dollars. I urge your support of this article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article ten. Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article ten. The motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on an article inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Brian Long, Chair of the Milford Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to amend section five point eight B of the personnel bylaws, vacation leave, replacing the word accrued when it is used therein with the word granted.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Moderator. Mr. Long.
Town meeting members, the Personnel Board, in conjunction with Human Resources, routinely reviews its bylaws to ensure accuracy with current federal, state, and local laws and regulations, as well as accuracy in wording. Article eleven changes the word accrued to granted to more accurately reflect the current policy of five point eight B. There is no policy change. This is just a cleanup of wording within our bylaws. The Personnel Board asks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Pillar, treasurer, collector, at-large member. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer to withdraw the sum of one million dollars from the sewer department retained earnings account for the purpose of utilization of said funds to offset partial borrowing for the Field Pond Project.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Pillar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, as you may recall, in May of two thousand and twenty-two, we approved the authorization to borrow for four point four million dollars for the Field Pond Project. In May of two thousand and twenty-three, we authorized and approved two million dollar transfer from the sewer stabilization to offset said borrowing and reduce the borrowing to two million dollars. After discussions with the finance director, the sewer superintendent, and the sewer commissioners, we are seeking a million dollars out of their retained earnings to offset more borrowing this May. As a result, March of two thousand and twenty-five, the project has one point eight million dollars to finish. If this goes through, this will cover the majority of the cost and leave us with the options in October to either withdraw from the sewer stabilization or another transfer for retained earnings. As of September of last year, the certified retained earnings funds from the state of Massachusetts for the town of Milford was two point eight million. So even with this million-dollar transfer, there will still be one point eight million dollars in retained earnings. I urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Pillar. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirteen.
I move to pass over Article thirteen.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article thirteen. Motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on an article inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen. Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article fourteen. Motion to pass over again, attempt to take no action on an article inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fifteen.
Chris Wilson, precinct eight, and planning board member. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Article Five Flood Plain District in its entirety and by adopting in lieu thereof the following new Article Five.
Mr. Wilson, is the text of the amendment in the motion exactly as the same as appears in the warrant?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
It is the same. Does any member object to dispensing with the reading of the amendment to the zoning bylaw relating to Article Five Flood Plain District? Hearing no objection, the motion is made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Wilson.
Pursuant of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, the Milford Planning Board on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing regarding the subject of Article fifteen, at which time the Planning Board unanimously voted to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article fifteen is the application of the Planning Board to amend Article Five Flood Plain District of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, the Planning Board recommends Article fifteen be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Wilson again?
Yep. So Article fifteen of the warrant is essentially a housekeeping article that amends Article Five Flood Plain District of the zoning bylaw related to the adjustments required by the Department of Conservation and Recreation on behalf of FEMA. It references the newly updated flood study and flood maps recently adopted by FEMA. The flood regulations were last updated in two thousand and eleven. Adopting this article will keep Milford eligible for participating in the FEMA flood insurance program. Again, the Planning Board urges your adoption of Article fifteen as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other voter care to be heard? Okay, the voters are reminded that amending the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-A, Section Five. Since no one has spoken in opposition, we'll take a voice vote. If the voice vote is not unanimous, then we will poll the individual precincts. So at this time, all those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator.
Joseph Zakili, precinct two, Chair, Milford Conservation Commission. Article sixteen, I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Fifteen-A, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following town-owned parcel totaling four acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Said transfer being for the purpose of preserving said parcel located east of Amherst Drive for open space, conservation, and passive recreation purposes as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen-A, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following town-owned parcel totaling four acres to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors Map Thirty-Six, Block Zero, Lot Forty, four point zero acres, location Amherst Drive. And said transfer to be for the purpose of preserving said parcel located east of Amherst Drive for open space conservation, passive recreation purposes as recommended in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. So the motion's been seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Recommendations refer to sponsor. Any voter care to be heard? Mrs. Zakili.
This four-acre parcel located east of Amherst Drive is one of the few remaining wooded open space parcels in the immediate neighborhood. As such, it should be preserved for conservation and future passive recreation purposes as recommended in both two thousand and three and two thousand and twenty-four Milford Comprehensive Plans. In addition, Godfrey Brook flows through the southwest corner of the property. The commission would like your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zakili. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Oh, excuse me. This is, it requires a two-thirds vote. So again, if it's not unanimous, we'll have to take a voice vote. So all those in favor will manifest by saying aye again.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen, seventeen, excuse me.
Yeah, Attorney Moody, precinct six. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows.
Attorney Moody?
Yes.
Is the text of the special legislation in the motion exactly the same as appears in the warrant?
Exactly the same, yes.
It is the same. Does any member object to dispensing with the reading of the special legislation to provide for the granting of additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be consumed on the premises? Hearing no objection, the motion is made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard? I believe Attorney Ferreira is going to present. She is a registered voter in the town of Milford from precinct three.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. My name is Suzette Ferreira. I'm an attorney with Consigliere and Bracato here in the town of Milford, and I'm here to speak tonight in support of an article that would authorize the select board to petition the legislature for special legislation allowing one additional all alcohol license for off-premises consumption specifically for Charlie's Mini Mart located at thirty-six School Street. This petition is needed because under current Massachusetts law, the number of alcohol licenses a town can issue is related to population. Unfortunately, that formula is based on old thresholds that haven't been kept up with the real population growth. Milford has grown substantially over the years, but the state cap has not been updated, even though the town's needs and demographics have changed. This leaves small, local, responsible businesses with no available path to apply unless it's through the legislature. Charlie's Mini Mart is a longstanding, family-owned neighborhood store that has been serving residents of School Street and the community since nineteen eighty-eight. Charlie's Mini Mart was also issued a malt beverage and wine license for off-premises consumption in December of two thousand and twenty-three. He has had no issues with his store or with his malt beverage and wine license since it was issued, and today he is simply asking to extend the ability to sell all alcohol in addition to beer and wine in order to meet his customers' needs and sustain the Mini Mart's sustainability. Charlie, Mr. Giocas, is a well-known, trusted member of the business community, and he's committed to ensuring that the ongoing compliance with both the ABCC and the local licensing authority. This petition is very specific in that it only authorizes one license specifically to thirty-six School Street, and it cannot be transferred to any other location. And Mr. Giocas, Charlie's Mini Mart is just looking to expand the sale of his beer and wine to include all alcohol, and we respectfully request and urge town meeting to vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Ferreira. Does any other vote to care to be heard?
Girl Wagner, precinct three. I'm gonna be very consistent, I was up here last year. Looking for alcohol license to give to an individual or a specific business. My premise was, I believe the law says you can ask for another license because of your population or in or extenuating circumstances. I didn't know that Massachusetts law said that now you can ask for a license for a business and/or a specific person, even though I think these people are fantastic, I know them. So unless somebody could tell me they changed the law, because last year it was explained you can ask for a license, but you don't go to the state and say I want a license for John Jones because he's my cousin. What is the law? Now, we have a lot of attorneys here, has the law changed? If it has, please advise me. Right, Mr. Viscani? Okay, I'm some.
Thanks, thank Viscani. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any other vote to care to be heard? Chief Tassino. I'll get to you next. I'll get to you next.
Robbie Tassino, precinct four. I was excited to see this in the articles when I received the package, simply because Mr. Giocas, I don't think you'll meet a more ardent Milfordian. We're not looking to get a license for Billan's son, who's from California and wants to do this in Milford. I applaud him as a person of his years that wants to continue operating his business. I don't know if you've ever been to Charlie's, but to say that he is kind, him and his family, to people of lesser means is an understatement. They don't care if you're a prince or a pauper when you walk in, they treat everybody like a prince. And I don't know how he makes any money there with the amount of philanthropy he does to people who don't have certain means. The food, the beverage that he hands out to people, these Milfordians that he takes care of, that he is kind to, we'd be here all night going down that list. So I urge support of this. This is an ardent Milfordian that is trying to keep his business going. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Tassino, voter in precinct one.
Good evening, town members. My name is Mike Abuso, precinct one. If you remember back at the October meeting, we had a similar discussion about granting an additional license, and after much argument, we pretty much decided that Milford has more than enough opportunities to purchase alcohol without issuing more, and especially where this is right next to a school. Do we really want to tempt kids with the opportunity for illegal purchases of alcohol? Not, you know, send nothing against Charles Express, but we all know people who have people who buy the alcohol for them. So I urge you to please vote against this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Abuso. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented for the special legislation. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized for the replacement and/or upgrading of ten tabulator devices utilized for town elections.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mrs. Neves.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Town meeting members, our current tabulators are eight years old. The recommendation is replacement every ten to twelve years. Twenty twenty-five current cost to replace our machines would be seven thousand dollars per machine. We have eight precinct tabulators and two spare machines. To replace the machines would be seventy thousand dollars if we were to replace them. Our current machines will not meet the new federal election standards, if not upgraded. The upgrade will include a color screen, a sixty percent faster boot-up speed, and a thirty percent faster ballot processing speed. The current, the company is currently offering a discount of three thousand dollars per machine for up for the upgrades, which is why we are asking for your support of this article, and I would appreciate appreciate your vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Hi, I'm Michael Valim, district, precinct two. I just had a question as regards to these machines, whether they currently, previously we were using paper ballots, would that change with these new machines?
Thank you, Ms. Valim.
The question was, was what? If there's...
They still use paper ballots?
We're gonna still use the paper ballots, yes. It's just really an upgrade for the media cards that would be in the machines, and it would just make them the processing faster and more efficient.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion as presented? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Pillar, treasurer, collector, town of Milford, district treasurer for Blackstone Valley Tech Vocational School. I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen G and a half, to approve the establishment of a stabilization account for the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District. Consistent with the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three vote of the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District Committee and the member community of Hope Dale, which act which action will provide additional flexibility with respect to future capital improvements, such account to be expended by a two-third vote of Regional School District Committee for any purpose for which Regional School District may borrow money or for such other district purpose as Massachusetts Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education may approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Pillar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I'm gonna read a letter that was sent out by Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick, the superintendent of the Blackstone Valley Tech School District. This was sent to our finance committee and was also presented to our finance committee back in April. Dear colleagues, as you consider the merits of Blackstone Valley Tech Stabilization Account Request, I share this rationale. The intent of this reserve-style account is based upon a strategy to counter federal revenue reductions and as an offset to address flat state revenue streams. Your vocational technical system has an enviable track record of securing grants. Current projections include some four million dollars. Rather than seek your support for special warrant capital items, BBT has relied upon Massachusetts School Building Authority reimbursements, capital improvement awards, donations, and renovation and repairs completed by students and staff. These are cost-effective approaches but have limited impact in responding to the wear and tear of a sixty-five-year-old building. As BBT embarks upon its newly and unanimously unanimously approved ten million dollar bonding approval delayed until FY twenty-seven, it is prudent to establish the strong the strongest bond rating Moody's and Standard Poor bond ratings are impacted by the stable performance, reserve levels, and recently adopted fiscal policies and practices. Establishing a stabilization account for capital strengths will improve BBT's rating situation. To respond to any concern, the BBT School Committee voted to limit the potential savings in this new stabilization account to a maximum of five percent of the operational budget. The likelihood of too much in the savings account is somewhat bizarre as BBT has less than two point five percent of its eligible savings in its excess and deficiency reserve. I urge you to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Pillar. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. At this time, I'd just like to recognize Dr. Fitzpatrick, he's in the back there. He is retiring, I believe, in July, and I think the town meeting would like to thank him for all the years of service and the shepherding he has done to make BBT, Blackstone Valley Technical High School, one of the best technical high schools in the state and probably in the country. So thank you so much, Dr. Fitzpatrick. And we wish good fortune to the next superintendent, Mr. Anthony Steele. Article twenty.
Moderator.
Zachary Taylor, Finance Director, At Lodge Member. Article twenty, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Section five, Clause fifty-four of Chapter fifty-nine of the General Laws. Which acceptance will exempt small personal property accounts with a fair cash value of three thousand dollars or less commencing in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six?
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard?
Moderator.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I am obviously not a member of the assessors, Board of Assessors, but I did agree to present this on their behalf, so I wanted to give you a few facts. We currently have one hundred and ninety-four accounts that meet this threshold. It totals eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. There are currently two hundred and twenty-nine towns in Massachusetts that have accepted these provisions. We currently have one thousand. The Board of Assessors want to jump that to three thousand dollars. As the Finance Director, I will tell you that a lot of these existing accounts do end up being written off through the overlay account, so in a backward way, it's not moving the radar too much, and it does give a very minor benefit to some of our local small businesses. I hope that that aids you in your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of one million dollars from the Capital Project Stabilization Account Number eight-three-two-five, and some being needed to complete the town park renovations, which renovations would include the demolition of a of building elements and renovation of the support building to include new walls, doors, fixtures, roof, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, storage room addition, and expansion of the park, bandstand, roof, and stage areas.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chris Affoli.
Thank you. Town meeting members, as a park commissioner, I must admit this is my least favorite task, coming back to the finance committee and town meeting members to ask for additional funding, but I'm here, so. As many of you have likely noticed, the town park has been under construction since July of two thousand and twenty-four. This project originally came before the town meeting for approval last October, with the expectations that a combination of community development block grant funds and appropriated town money would be enough to cover the full scope. Unfortunately, due to the rising costs and price increases since the initial planning stages, the original estimates fell short of what was needed to complete the project. That's why I'm here to ask for your support approving this article that would provide additional funds necessary to finish the bathroom building and the bandstand, both of which are were part of the original plan for the town park recreational facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Affoli. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask the presenter several questions before I make a decision on whether to make an amendment to the make an amendment to this motion. And these questions have already been provided to the presenter, so he knows them in advance. For all here, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to this overage of one one million dollars on a town park project that was originally budgeted at two million dollars, and consider how we might be able to save just a little bit of money, and think about how we might be able to use that savings in a slightly better way. So my first question to the presenter was, or is, if no bathrooms are built, I get to talk about bathrooms, if no bathrooms are built and a storage facility is not built, how much how much money would be saved? Question two, bathrooms must remain sanitary to be useful every day. How will these bathrooms be kept sanitary every day, including weekends? Question three, is the bar is the money in the Parks Department budget to keep these bathrooms sanitary every day, including weekends? And last question, this technical question, has the Parks Department considered asking the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board to grant a variance so that an accessible bathroom is not required at town park? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll wait for response.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any vote to care to be heard? But Mr. Chris Affoli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So there's more to the project than just the bathrooms. The building is a storage unit, it's an existing bathroom, it's being used right now for storage and a bathroom and whatever else we need it for. The storage is mostly for the sports, they the sports teams that use the park, so we're not gonna eliminate that storage that's needed for them. So to remove the building isn't an option, but the the building has to be rehabbed one way or the other. The option would be remove the bathrooms or lock the doors and don't use them. So the bathroom part is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars of that million dollars. In some of the work that we need to do ahead of time for the bathrooms has already been done, so I think to to eliminate the bathrooms or eliminate the building doesn't make sense. The Parks Department cleans those bathrooms... The Parks Department cleans those bathrooms daily. When there's a lot of sporting events on a weekend, then they're cleaned on the weekends. Because there's always a call guy that has to go in and take care of the fields and clean the bathrooms. As far as the ADA compliance, whatever the architects had looked into when they designed the bathroom, that's as far as they took it. Us as commissioners did not look into that. We rely on our consultants to do that work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Affoli. Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask the presenter several questions before I make a decision on whether to make an amendment to this motion. And these questions have already been provided to the presenter, so he knows them in advance. For all here, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to this overage of $1 million on a town park project that was originally budgeted at $2 million, and consider how we might be able to save just a little bit of money, and think about how we might be able to use that savings in a slightly better way. So my first question to the presenter was, or is, if no bathrooms are built, I get to talk about bathrooms, if no bathrooms are built and a storage facility is not built, how much money would be saved? Question two, bathrooms must remain sanitary to be useful every day. How will these bathrooms be kept sanitary every day, including weekends? Question three, is the money in the Parks Department budget to keep these bathrooms sanitary every day, including weekends? And last question, a technical question, has the Parks Department considered asking the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board to grant a variance so that an accessible bathroom is not required at town park? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll wait for your response.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any vote of care to be heard? Mr. Affoli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, there's more to the project than just the bathrooms. The building is a storage unit. It's an existing bathroom. It's being used right now for storage and a bathroom and whatever else we need it for. The storage is mostly for the sports teams that use the park, so we're not going to eliminate that storage. That's needed for them. So to remove the building isn't an option, but the building has to be rehabbed one way or the other. The option would be remove the bathrooms or lock the doors and don't use them. So, the bathroom pot is anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 of that million dollars. In some of the work that we need to do ahead of time for the bathrooms has already been done, so I think to eliminate the bathrooms or eliminate the building doesn't make sense. The Parks Department cleans those bathrooms daily. When there's a lot of sporting events on a weekend, then they're cleaned on the weekends. Because there's always a call guy that has to go in and take care of the fields and clean the bathrooms. As far as the ADA compliance, whatever the architects had looked into when they designed the bathroom, that's as far as they took it. Us as commissioners did not look into that. We rely on our consultants to do that work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Affoli. Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, there's more to the project than just the bathrooms. The building is a storage unit. It's an existing bathroom. It's being used right now for storage and a bathroom and whatever else we need it for. The storage is mostly for the sports teams that use the park, so we're not going to eliminate that storage. That's needed for them. So to remove the building isn't an option, but the building has to be rehabbed one way or the other. The option would be remove the bathrooms or lock the doors and don't use them. So, the bathroom pot is anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 of that million dollars. In some of the work that we need to do ahead of time for the bathrooms has already been done, so I think to eliminate the bathrooms or eliminate the building doesn't make sense. The Parks Department cleans those bathrooms daily. When there's a lot of sporting events on a weekend, then they're cleaned on the weekends. Because there's always a call guy that has to go in and take care of the fields and clean the bathrooms. As far as the ADA compliance, whatever the architects had looked into when they designed the bathroom, that's as far as they took it. Us as commissioners did not look into that. We rely on our consultants to do that work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Affoli. Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Affoli, for those answers. They were helpful. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the main motion under Article 21 as follows, to delete the amount $1 million and insert in its place the amount of $850,000.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to amend the main motion under Article 21 as follows, to delete the amount of $1 million and insert in its place the amount of $850,000. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. Thank you, town meeting members. Well, this is, as you all know, I am very close to the disability community, and I have always advocated, mostly always advocated, on behalf of those persons less fortunate. But tonight, I take a different tack based upon how much these one or two bathrooms are going to cost, $150,000. And I want you to all to think about two bathrooms costing $150,000. It's stunning. And that doesn't even include, they don't even have to buy the land. This is just pure, pure, pure construction. Given that this project is already going to be well in excess of its original budget of $2 million up to the tune of another $850,000, I think we, as town meeting, have the obligation to find where we can save money. So my proposal is to save $150,000 and not build the two bathrooms. And again, many of you would find that to be very curious for me to say, because what I'm saying is basically, let's not have an accessible bathroom at town park. But there are good reasons for this. The cleaning and sanitation, the literature indicates that parks and, that, the building code nor the plumbing code require that bathrooms be in open space recreational areas. There's no legal requirement in either one of those codes. The accessible code does say when there is an existing bathroom and there is construction done, a new bathroom needs to be put in its place. However, the developer may seek a variance from the Massachusetts Architectural Board to not have to build that particular bathroom. I can say, as serving on the Architectural Access Board for over three years, I saw plenty of these kinds of variance requests from municipalities, because the Architectural Access Board wanted to be very sensitive to the budget constraints of municipalities. They would do what's known as a cost-benefit analysis, comparing the number of likely persons with disabilities to $150,000. I can reasonably confidently say that if such a variance was put before the Architectural Access Board, that variance would be granted. Further, in the literature, it says quite clearly, restrooms in public areas, particularly outdoor recreational areas, are filthy. And many of you have seen some of the porta-potties in town, and many of you called the presenter about how they are. I dare say that by 3:00 or 4:00, even if they were cleaned in the morning, they would not be used. So I doubt that they will be used in a great deal. Maintenance is expensive. There are needed routine inspections, vandalism-resistant materials must be used, fixtures often need replacement, maintenance is uneven, maintenance personnel are poorly trained in OSHA, ADA, and other customer service basics, emergency reporting is unevenly implemented, and vandalism often occurs. Vandalism is a main issue with this. Given that it might be, these restaurants will be sometimes in poorly lit areas, they may be unsupervised, without visible staff, and adolescents congregating without recreational outlets often do vandalism. So ladies and gentlemen, if you take together the fact that this project is well over budget, and as a town meeting, we do deserve, I mean, we do have the responsibility to find where we can save money for the taxpayers where we can. And given that the, that the use of these restrooms will be de minimis, at least in the later parts of the day when they become less clean, and given that they will be subject to vandalism, I sincerely, sincerely ask you to just take a little less burden on the taxpayers, not have any restrooms built, and substitute $850,000 instead of $1 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other vote of care to be heard?
Voter.
Mr. Visconti. This is on the motion to amend, Mrs. Visconti. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me know if I go off base here, okay?
Certainly.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Mike Visconti, Precinct 8. I can tell you that, my personal experience, I have been before the Architectural Barrier Board in Boston on several occasions. I found them to be very understanding and considerate of variance requests that especially apply to municipalities. So, I see no problem with seeking a variance. Now keeping in mind that I am a longstanding user of the town park comfort station back in the day, as was referred to by my parents. Us kids had kind of a different name for it, which I will not refer to now. In any case, back then, it was never maintained. When the town park renovation project was first proposed, I suggested that that comfort station maybe be repurposed for use as maybe storage for parks equipment and whatever. I was told that the comfort station was well beyond repair and absolutely had to be torn down. So I'm wondering now what has changed that it's able to be rehabbed? So if we can answer that. But I would suggest that we apply, keeping in mind that I have routinely in need of accessible facilities, so it's kind of out of character for me to ask for a variance for this, but I think in this particular case, considering the money that could be saved, it might be a route that we could take. Also, this sounds like one of those, not necessarily limited to areas where we could use a camera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any other vote of care to be heard? Mr. Levine.
So, these are all great points, but right now...
Mr. Levine, can you just identify?
David Levine, Precinct 1, Member of the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
These were all great points. We had a long discussion about the park and how it started and where we are today. The thing is, we're spending $1 million to get a $1,003 grant, and the grant, I believe, and if someone please confirm it, stipulated that the bathroom needed to get done. So the question is, is that the work that has already been done, will that satisfy the grant money? And if it does, then I will agree with the previous speakers, then we can reduce it because we're going to get the $1,003. So I guess that's my question on that one. And the other thing is to, I guess, mitigate people's concerns with this $1 million, if we're going to go over $1 million, because that's some of them, myself, is concerned that we might go over $1 million, because based on what's been happening. So, this $1 million includes a hiring of a collective of the works, which would be more like a project manager, so they'll be the person that'll be overseeing the change orders, costs coming in, making sure that the work is being done up to code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Mr. Azem.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, my name's Jim Azem. I'm Precinct 6, and also the Parks and Rec Administrator. So, before you vote on this amendment, I think it's fair to tell everyone who uses these bathrooms and who will benefit from these bathrooms. Basically, anyone that goes to the park's going to have access to these bathrooms. The Park Commissioner and myself have talked about opening these bathrooms throughout our workday. So that will be from 6:00 AM until 2:00 PM they'll be open, and then they're also open for middle school, high school, youth baseball, youth softball, anyone that's using the playground, parents go there all throughout the day, and there's no facilities that are open. And that's why we have decided to open these facilities during the day, so they get more use. Bandstands, the bandstand, band concerts, we open those bathrooms for all band concerts, any school event, Boy Scouts, Girl Scout events that are at the bandstands, those bathrooms are used. And, you know, as far as the vandalism that was spoken about, we are planning on putting cameras also at town park, so that is also on our list. When we had the lights installed at all the courts, there were brackets put up for those cameras, so that will assist in the vandalism for that, so we won't be coming back in October for more money for cameras. So, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Azem. Any other vote of care to be heard? Mr. Correa. This is on the motion to amend, $1,850,000.
Alberto Correa, Precinct 5. I'm going to talk to the amendment, and I'm talking as a town meeting member, not as a member of the Finance Committee, because the Finance Committee did support this. But now the amendment makes me question something. We have a $1 million proposal. If you take the bathrooms out of the $1 million bathhouse, what do we end up with? An $800,000 shed? I'm totally confused. This is something that seems like there's a fundamental question. Can we get an exemption for the bathrooms? Well, we haven't asked. Can we build it in time if we wait till the fall? We haven't asked. What do we have in this $1 million? I mean, I don't know how many of you have built houses in Milford. I bet a lot. I bet you haven't spent the $1 million, not counting on land being given to you for free. This is totally confusing to me right now. If we take the bathrooms out of the bathhouse, are we saying we're going to spend $700,000, $800,000 on a shed? What is that, a light bulb, a door, and some walls? Seems like a lot of money. Now, I'm not saying it's the wrong investment, but before I spend 3/4 of a million dollars, I'd like some more details and answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. Any other vote of care to be heard on the motion to amend? If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is to amend the main motion under Article 1, excuse me, Article 21 as follows, to delete the amount of $1 million and insert in its place the amount of $850,000. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is defeated. We'll come back to the original question, which is to appropriate $1 million from the Capital Project Stabilization Account, any, Mr. Walsh, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, I just want to back everybody up and tell you a little story.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be combined with funds remaining under Article thirty-seven of the special town meeting of October 2022, to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of repairing three hundred feet of forty-two inch pipe located at or about Prospect Heights.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Christopher Foley.
Thank you. Town meeting members, this article discusses the ongoing repair of three hundred, of the three hundred foot long forty-two inch drain pipe running through Prospect Heights neighborhood. Engineering work, including assessments and planning, has been completed. The estimate for cost for replacing the pipe is approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Due to the potential time and disturbance of surrounding properties, we've decided to line the pipe instead. For less money, this method will be less disruptive to the neighborhood and will effectively address the sinkhole problem along the pipe. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher Foley. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-four. Attorney Moody.
Attorney Moody, precinct six. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote to amend section two point three, use regulation schedule of the zoning bylaw relating to retail sales or service uses in self-service gasoline stations in the BP Business Park zoning district as follows. Gasoline stations slash self-service would be allowed by special permit within the Business Park BP district, subject to footnote thirty-five, which reads, "Only when ancillary to a retail business having a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of inside retail space." Retail sales or service would be permitted within the Business Park BP district as a matter of right, subject to site plan review.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Attorney Moody. I'll just add that footnote thirty-two states that self-service gasoline stations shall maintain at least one active attendant service pump island at all times, and furthermore, that both of these commercial uses were, currently are a, an excluded or prohibited use. So a motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance Committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Does the planning board have a report? Mr. Wilson.
Christopher Wilson, planning board. Town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board, on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing regarding the subject of Article twenty-four, at which time the planning board voted four in favor, one opposed, to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article twenty-four is a petition article by Root Eighty-Five Realty Corporation to amend the zoning bylaw to allow the retail sales or services uses in self-service gasoline stations in the BP Business Park zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Kinsigley.
David Kinsigley, Milford Zoning Board. This particular article actually, originally, the BP Zone was amassed under the master plan from the planning board in the town of Milford going back to two thousand and two. From that focus, we all envisioned that there would be high-tech companies and office buildings to be built. Well, the zoning board ended up getting the mirage of proposed affordable housing complexes over the last six years because we fell from ten percent down to six percent. Currently, to date, the Deer Street BP Zone is currently seventy-five percent of a residential application, which is basically bringing in the residential tax rate of about twelve dollars and eighty cents versus twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents in the commercial zone. Currently, that street will be occupying approximately five hundred and ninety units in probably eleven buildings. We have just hit, over the last two fortyBs that just came through the zoning board, I think we are on year six, because one of those complexes up on Deer Street did not build the building permit in time, and we can only go by when the building permit was pulled, we ended up getting three more applications. Saying this, the BP Zone Office Park District, although it was wonderful when we did this back in two thousand and two, we're currently seeing office buildings aren't being built. So we need to kind of adjust our flexibility in order to create the commercial tax rate. In doing so, we also need to be flexible and create additional uses within those zones to keep and increase the commercial tax rate. As we saw tonight, a commercial tax rate is a big driving factor for our residential tax rates to stay under control. So saying that, what we're finding right now is seventy-five percent of Deer Street, which is the BP Zone, is only going to be giving us, seventy-five percent of that is going to be taxed on a residential basis. The BP Zone was a great idea and a great format. It was pretty restrictive. Now, since COVID, as you can see, we've got office buildings in Boston that they want to convert to affordable housing or housing components. I ask the town meeting to support this article to allow additional flexibility. Are we going to look at something along the line of maybe a Restaurant Depot coming in, whether it be a, another retailer? Probably. Is it going to create jobs? Yes, it will. Having the flexibility of additional uses under the planning board's control of permitting will be beneficial, I think, to this community, the residential taxpayer, and also increase our commercial tax base. I hope you support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsigley. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, then the question comes upon the motion, and I'll remind the voters that amending the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote pursuant to Master General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section five. Since no one has spoken in opposition, I will take a voice vote. If a voice vote is not unanimous, then we will poll the individual precincts. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The members will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Somebody said no. Do you want me to take the voice? I'll take a voice vote again. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-five. Is, oh, Mrs. Neves.
Yes. I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature for special, special legislation with respect to the nomination process of candidates for town meeting at the annual town election, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows.
Mrs. Neves, is the text of the special legislation in the motion exactly the same as appears in the warrant?
Yes, it is.
It's the same. Does any member object to dispensing with the reading of the special legislation in respect to the nomination process for candidates for town meeting at the annual town election? Hearing no objection, the motion is made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance Committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard? Mrs. Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, the motion under Article twenty-five proposes two changes to Section four of Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three. The first change in subsection A reduces the number of signatures required on nomination papers from thirty to ten. This is with the hope that the reduction in the number of signatures will encourage more registered voters to run for town meeting. The second change in subsection B better outlines who is not an incumbent town meeting member. Again, this motion seeks to encourage more registered voters to run for town meeting by reducing the number of signatures on a candidate's nomination papers. I ask you to vote in favor of this special, special legislation.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Does any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article twenty-six. Mrs. Neves.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature for special legislation with respect to any vacancy in the full number of town meeting members, which legislation would provide substantially as follows. Section one, Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three is hereby amended by striking out Section seven, as most recently amended by Section one of Chapter two ninety-seven of the Acts of nineteen ninety-two, and inserting in place thereof the following section. Section seven, any vacancy in the full number of town meeting members from any precinct, whether arise from a failure of the registered voters thereof to elect, or from any other cause, may be filled until the next annual election by the remaining members of the precinct from among the registered voters thereof. A registered voter of a precinct thereof shall be eligible for election to fill a vacancy by filing a letter of intent with the town clerk, not less than fourteen days before the scheduled date of a representative town meeting. Upon receipt of a registered voter's letter of intent, the town clerk shall promptly give notice to the members from the precinct in which the vacancy or vacancies exist, and he or she shall call a special meeting of such members for the purpose of filling any vacancy. He or she shall, shall cause to be mailed, shall, shall cause to be mailed to every such member a notice specifying the object, time, and place of the meeting, with the notice of the time and place at which a representative town meeting is to be held as set forth in Section three. At the said special meeting, a majority of the members from such precinct shall constitute a quorum, and they shall elect from their own numbers a chairman and a clerk. The choice to fill any vacancy shall be by ballot, and a majority of the votes cast shall be required for choice. The chairman and clerk shall count the ballots and shall make a certificate of the choice and forthwith file the same with the town clerk, together with a written acceptance by the member or members so chosen, who shall thereupon be deemed elected and qualified as a town meeting member or members, subject to the right of all town meeting members to judge of the election and qualifications of the members as set forth in Section three. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Motion's been made and seconded. Any vote of, oh, recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Refer to sponsor.
Recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The motion under Article twenty-six proposes a number of changes to Section seven of Chapter two seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen thirty-three. These changes will update and simplify the process for a registered voter to fill a town meeting member vacancy in that voter's precinct. And to like the previous article, this motion seeks to encourage more voters to become town meeting members. I ask you to vote in favor of this special legislation.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-seven. Attorney Murray.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Section nine E of Chapter thirty-two B of the general laws, which would authorize the town to offer a subsidiary or additional rate towards the monthly premium of retired employees of the town.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Finance Committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any vote to care to be heard? Attorney Murray.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a technical amendment that simply allows the town to contribute greater than fifty percent towards the premium of insurance for retirees.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article twenty-eight. Mr. Mazakelli.
Article twenty-eight. I move that the town vote to accept, as for a public way, a private way known as Walter Circle, together with any appurtenance easements in accordance with the vote of the planning board dated April first, two thousand and twenty-five, as follows.
Mr. Mazakelli, is the legal description of the report of the Select Board the same as, as in the handout that was provided to all town meeting members tonight?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, it's the same.
Okay, it is the same?
Yes.
Does any member object with the reading of the legal description of Walter Circle and the report of the Select Board? If not, then the motion is made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Mazakelli.
Thank you. Walter Circle was designed and constructed in accordance with subdivision control laws. All work on this roadway has been completed by the developer. The article would transfer ownership of the right-of-way and associated drain easements to the town. I urge your support for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-nine. Mr. Mazakelli, uh, Zakili. Excuse me.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee, in order to effectuate repairs to the elevators and related systems at Stacy Middle School.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty. Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief, in order to purchase an appropriate PFAS gear for the Milford Fire Department.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, as we all know, one of the occupational hazards of being a firefighter in this country is cancer. And cancer is caused by the substances that the fire department has to deal with and the fires that they're putting out, the substances that are in the buildings that are under fire. This was originally brought to our attention, and we were going to equip all new hirees with this PFAS equipment moving forward. And the Select Board and the fire chief got together and said, "Well, what is the message that we send to the firefighters that have served this community for a great many years currently, that they don't matter?" Of course, they matter. That we have a responsibility to make sure that everybody that's out there performing the duty of a firefighter in this community, that we give them the tools that they need to be protected properly. And that's- And, that's why we came back and we put this article, restated the article is a better way to put it, that we're going to purchase the equipment to, um, equip all of our firefighters, so that when they go out there and perform the duties that they do every single day, that we have a responsibility to give them the equipment that they need to protect them properly. That being said, I would greatly ask you to support this article, so that we send the message toward the firefighters in our community, that we do care about them, and that we want to protect them, and we want to thank them for everything they do for us every single day. Again, I ask you to support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Article thirty-one. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents from the excess and deficiency account to an account referred to as Fund two-four-eight-nine Circuit Breaker.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a classic example of two state agencies not talking to each other, if you can believe it. So, as part of the free cash certification process, the Department of Revenue required me to close this amount, even though I tried fighting it, I knew their interpretation was wrong, but I did what they said. Three months later, I get a phone call saying that they goofed, like I knew they did. So, this is me attempting to return the money back to the school jurisdiction, to, um, this important program. Just to mention, Circuit Breaker is a revolving fund that is primarily used for, uh, special education tuition costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-two. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article thirty-two. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, fifty thousand of said sum to be added to Account four-two-three-five-one-one-zero, and one hundred and ninety thousand to be added to Account four-two-three-five-three-zero-zero, Highway Department General Expenses. All as voted under Article four of the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As you may know by now, that, uh, the snow and ice budget is the only budget that can legally be deficit spent, and it traditionally does indeed get deficit spent. This year was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. If we don't take care of it now, I am required to raise it on the tax recap, so I urge your support of this article, as we do have, uh, free cash available at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article thirty-three. I move that the town vote to close out certain special article accounts to the general funds of the town or sewer department retained earnings as follows.
Mr. Taylor, are the details of the closeouts the same as printed in the finance committee report that was mailed to all town meeting members?
They are, Mr. Moderator.
They are the same. Does any member object to waiving the reading of the details to close out certain special article accounts to the general funds of the town? If not, then the motion is made and seconded. Uh, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Recommendation is favorable from the finance committee. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is also an annual recurring article. Um, this is the closeout articles that have successfully completed their purpose, and the money is no longer necessary to be encumbered. It will close out to the general fund and be part of next year's free cash calculations. I urge your support on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article thirty-four. I move that the town vote to transfer funds between certain line items voted under Article four of the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting, for the purpose of making funds available in line item accounts not sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, as follows.
Mr. Taylor, are the details of the transfer of funds between certain line items the same as printed in the finance committee report?
They are, Mr. Moderator.
They are the same. Does any member object to waiving the reading of the transfer of funds between certain line items voted under Article four of the May twentieth, two thousand and forty Annual Town Meeting? Hearing no objection, the motion is made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor.
Town meeting members, Article four, as you voted earlier tonight, is a very large appropriation with many different departments. Oftentimes, things do occur, such as unexpected repairs, or retirements, or overtime, that require us to, uh, shuffle the deck a little bit, if you will. But, I want to assure you, this is within existing appropriation and necessary to close out the books for this fiscal year. I urge your support on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. What is the pleasure of the meeting?
Dissolve the warrant.
Mr. Long has made a motion to dissolve the warrant, uh, has been made and seconded, uh, it's not debatable. Question comes upon the motion to dissolve the warrant. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously, and the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Annual Town Meeting is hereby dissolved. The monitors will please bring up their, uh, second attendance list to the town clerk. Thank you.
Make the motion. Yeah. Make the motion. Good job, guys. Yeah. Yeah. I agree. Yeah. I think we're good. 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 Yeah.[1786.11]